Public Health England, PHE, Centre for Radiation, Chemical and Environmental Hazards. CRCE, take the lead on public health matters associated with radio frequency, electromagnetic fields, radio waves used in telecommunications. PHE advises the government on all aspects of public health, including exposure to radio waves, the appropriate standards of protection for the general population, and any measures necessary to protect sensitive groups. PHE inherited this responsibility from the former Health Protection Agency, HBA, and it continues to provide a range of public information about radio frequency topics. We have invited external speakers to present to the committee about this item. Cambridge Macaulay from the Adesfor Body, Royal UK. Paul Coles from ETE, who is, will give an industry perspective of 5G agenda. Alison Bell from Somerset Cancer Clinic's Public Health Team will also explain to the committee the advice available to central government from PHE about the matter. We've also received several question members of the public to speak on items and I will give our speakers the opportunity to respond to these.
First thing, are friends electric? Well, I can assure you they are. So am I and so are you. And our brainwaves connect to the human waves from the ionosphere in a symbiotic relationship with matching low frequencies, which is crucial for brain functioning. The human is connected to lightning and climate change, which rests upon a natural unchanging electromagnetic field. And NASA have said this. Pulse technology takes no account of these delicate interconnections in several magnitudes more powerful. 5G is tested in an anechoic chamber when nature is shut out. No birds, no bees, no plants to validate safety. No humans, no existing ELS, extreme low frequencies. ICNERF's guidelines for ELS recognise electrostimulation to the peripheral nerves and central nervous system and the heart. It's not just about domestic electricity in these guys. Electrostimulation in these guys are discussed by the IAEA special committee, talking about pulse and square waves. PHE confirm mobile phones emit 2.8 Hz, 8.34 Hz, and wifi 10 Hz. These are in the delta and alpha waves and the hypothalamus, which regulates biological rhythms and impulses and metabolism. So the question is, is SAR the same as the metabolic rate? But PHE say we have to be able to demodulate these signals, essentially pick out the low frequency part. They say it's unlikely we can do this. So this is the only part of the contention. IAEA don't agree with their position. They say neurons and neuronal networks are particularly sensitive to ever weak, even weak modulations, which are found to be biologically significant. Frequency resonance has been demonstrated through EEG showing demodulation on the alpha and beta waves at the International Conference on Magnetism in 2009. Chief author of ICNERF, Riley, thinks we should look further with electrostimulation to include the small fibre nerves. So we have a situation here where one in 10 people out of 55 had unexplained small fibre neuropathy. Harvard and King's College equate small fibre neuropathy with fibromyalgia, which affects up to 2 million people in the UK. So even before we even think about introducing 5G,
30 seconds.
we will be specifically the exact electrostimulation site as ELS, the nociceptors, the receptors of the skin, which are the pinheads of the peripheral nerves. We need to investigate the existing technologies doing to the nerves of the people, especially because already 40% over the safe limit with the staircase error. So we need to ask this to be referred to the civil officer with a call for evidence for the point of demodulation, which is crucial to harm.
Okay, this question was received late and so we will respond in writing to the individual. However, as we stated at the beginning, Public Health England is responsible for the government advice on this technology and so it's best that when you have these technical queries, you refer those to Public Health England, CRCE. Thank you very much indeed. Our next speaker is Elizabeth.
5G will add an extra layer of electromagnetic microwave radiation on top of what we already have. And what we already have is causing biological harm. Is it no wonder that life expectancy in the UK is now stalled and even declined in some areas? Is it no wonder that only on September 10th and Alzheimer's disease is rapidly growing in younger adults? Is it no wonder that in the UK cancers now the most common cause of death in children aged 1 to 14 years? And brain tumours are paying more lives than any other? Is it no wonder that the world's insects are hurtling down the path to extinction? And fertility rates are dropping all over the Western world? Let's all look up from mobile phones and question what has changed in the last 30 to 20 years? 5G will exacerbate all these issues. Do we really want driverless cars? And do we really need our toaster to speak to our fridge? Where is our democratic choice? Where has been placed in regard to all of this? So-called technological advancements do not always work, as we have seen with smart motorways. 5G means a densification of infrastructure within our communities, our high schools and in children's playgrounds. It has well documented there are cancer clusters around cell phone towers. Why aren't we safeguarding our children? This is madness. Do we really want a constellation of 53,000 plus satellites surrounding our precious planet like a cage? Do we have any idea how this will affect the ionosphere and the weather? In 2011, the World Health Organisation and the International Agency for Research on Cancer classified electromagnetic fields as possibly carcinogenic to humans, a Group 2B. This was based on an increased risk of glioma, a type of brain cancer associated with mobile phone use. One of the WHO scientists, Professor Anthony Miller, now states the evidence published since 2011 of those requirements to reclassify electromagnetic fields as a Group 1, known carcinogenic to humans. Professor Miller is not scaremongering. He is most certainly not operating on the margins of accepted scientific thinking. He is one of the world's leading cancer epidemiologists. He is a trusted advisor with the US Brain Tumor Association. Professor Miller says 5G technology is being rolled out in communities without health or environmental impact having been evaluated. Strange, we are being saturated with radiation and a moratorium on the role that 5G is essential. My question is, would the Stuarts Council please therefore task and finish for you to thoroughly investigate 5G technology and protect the citizens of Somerset? Our next speaker is Neil, a chartered engineer with a master's degree in electro-electrical engineering for an imperial college and 37 years' experience in aerospace, nuclear system and safety design.
Okay, so as a chartered engineer, I've got responsibility for the public in regard to safety. I've suffered the effects of wireless radiation with my family over the last 13 years, over which time I've been looking into this particular problem and discussing it with leading scientists around the world. Mobiles, wifi, etc. It emits pulses of polarised microwave radiation from 600 megahertz to up to gigahertz. The pulse frequencies are extremely low frequencies and are 2, 4, 8, 10, 217 Hz and many more due to multiple sources in the environment. All of those signals illuminate biological structures. The radiation is absorbed by biological structures. The pulses are bioactive, as acknowledged by the Stuart Report 2000, section 5. And believe it or not, the lower the frequency, the lower the power needed to have an effect. The mainstream scientific opinion on health implications are that there is a major problem. Two-thirds of all reports, at least, report biological effects of this wireless radiation. Data places such as PubMed or Bioinitiative, IET in 2014, two-thirds of all reports. I've got a CD of hundreds of reports and lists here.
Excuse me, can we just have something really important for us to hear? I mean, raise the level just a little bit. Sorry to interrupt.
That's not on.
Okay, shout louder. Okay, sorry. The symptoms are numerous: headaches, memory problems, sleep disorders, tinnitus and severe fatigue, and concentration problems. I know I've experienced many of these and many others I know have too. It's also proven to be linked with long-term conditions such as cancer, Alzheimer's, immunosuppression, neurological diseases and digestive disorders. The NTP and Ramazini studies in recent years have linked wireless with cancer. A significant mechanism is the voltage gated calcium channel effect related to calcium efflux, related to oxidative stress, DNA damage and neurological effects. All current guidelines point to ICNERF 1998 and these do not recognise biological effects, only heating effects. The FCC in the States has started work on looking at biological effects in 2013 and gave up and is not interested in it. Public Health England reports are inaccurate. Comer only spends a few hours on it a year. The WHO class is at the Class 2 carcinogen. The chief medical officer recommends children minimize their use of wireless. The Council of Europe recognises EHS. 5G millimetric wave will create massive more exposure levels and cause SAR issues. And the current limits will not, it will go over the current limits, which ICNERF wants to increase. ICNERF present guidelines. Okay. Wireless is environmental polluting. Thank you very much.
While we're here, we understand the government is firmly committed to the rollout of 5G infrastructure and the internet of things. We continue our councillors as a first line of defence, our primary care, or at least our first line of questioning, to ask you to ascertain that the government has done its homework on this project. As a council, are you entirely confident that all aspects of 5G and the internet of things are fit for purpose, safe to use and not damaging to the environment? Will you ascertain this is truly about what enhances life and not just about money and unsustainable growth? Two, what kind of world? The BBC News this morning has a headline, "New Rules Could Spell the End of Throwaway Culture." We gather that 5G and the internet of things will involve 20,000, at least, possibly 50,000 new satellites orbiting the earth. I understand these do not have an unlimited life and will need replacing regularly. It will also involve the wastage of millions of electrical devices, not just phones and computers, but kitchen whiteboards, lighting, TVs and audio equipment. None of these we have now will be compatible with 5G technology. Is it also the case that millions of vehicles will need to be scrapped to make way for electric driverless motoring? We're reminded almost daily by people as diverse as David Attenborough and Greta Thunberg that this is unsustainable. To what extent does this seriously interfere with Somerset's and the nation's aspirations for a greener environment? Three, what kind of society? We are the most watched, spied upon, photographed, monitored population in human history. We understand that smart devices are smart because they collect and send data about us to those who would like to sell us things, as well as to governments and other bodies. What assurance have councillors received that information held will be secure? How much scrutiny are councillors prepared to accept on our behalf as well as their own before it becomes intrusive and interferes with civil liberties?
Government energy statistics demonstrate that generation losses from power station to plug socket are roughly two-thirds. If a power station is 50% coal, 50% gas generation, as some still are in the UK, how will all electric cars save energy? This disregards the mining of air metals and elements, usually in politically divergent countries or endangered habitats, just for wireless devices and electrical car batteries, creating endlessly for rechargeable and standby energy usage for internet streaming, downloading, mobile phoning and texting. Projections of 150 billion mobile devices worldwide are set for a larger energy footprint than the entire global aviation industry. Harvesting, transporting and storing massive amounts of 5G data comes at a price. By 2025, server farms will be using 20% of global energy generation. These buildings need no heating, but often require large cooling systems. Like the prefix "smart", these clouds mask an unfluffy adverse energy equation. A 5G base station expects to consume roughly three times as much power as a 4G base station. With 5G mesh densification, more and larger base stations are needed to cover the same geographical area. Energy monitoring systems really are not that energy-saving, constantly powered by electrically generated wifi and Bluetooth for pointless continuous data transport. 5G densification is a huge threat to the much-wanted political savings made by budget-squeezed local authorities converting HID and SOM streetlights to LEDs. In upgrading the number of streetlights, it normally a factor of three is to be counted because of the 150 metre maximum distance between lamp posts to ensure full saturation of the neighborhood with perpetual wireless signal. Electrical cabinets controlling this infrastructure will rise in number considerably. We've threatened additional real-time wireless stream advertising on many lights generated from your harvested digital data. Will local authorities foot the bill for the massive increase required in energy required to run this grid all year round, cancelling energy savings against revenue? 5G-enabled streetlighting with phased array wireless technology uses 3,300 watt relays and heavy duty 450 volt capacitors with wiring synonymous with prodigious energy consumption. Wherever there is heat, there is also wasted energy. The internal wiring diameter evidences this, dissipating heat generated by high voltage. The typical mobile tower base station cabinets, power cable installations are numerous and very large in diameter. This is before the larger 5G masks enter service. How on this earth will we find all the generated capacity to implement this energy in a global revolution with its full-time powered smart?
Instructed by the US government, the National Toxicology Programme was asked to find out whether exposure to microwave radiation was safe. 20 years later, with a budget of over 20 million US dollars, the National Toxicology data shows clear evidence, i.e. the highest scientific proof, that exposure to microwave radiation is carcinogenic. This data also puts into disrepute the ICNERF and Public Health England viewpoint that non-ionising radiation is not dangerous because it is capable of damaging DNA as well as a suite of other adverse biological effects. The National Toxicology Programme tested 3,000 rats and mice for two years, the most comprehensive assessment to date on health effects in animals exposed to radio frequency radiation. Animal studies received huge amounts of funding in science since they are the most reliable test subjects to assess the level of risk from toxins to human health. This study proved wrong the prevailing assumption that wireless radiation and non-thermic exposures is incapable of causing adverse effects. European investigators, the Ramazzini Institute in Italy, were similarly ambitious. In their recent study, they investigated radio frequency effects in nearly 2,500 rats from the foetal stage until death. Both studies confirm that radio frequency radiation, microwave radiation, exposure has biological effects, states John Sanet, a professor of preventative medicine and dean of the Colorado School of Medical Health. The NTP study provides the most compelling evidence yet that microwave radiation is linked to cancer in lab rodents, the strongest finding connected microwave radiation with heart cancer in male rats, but the researchers also reported elevated rates of lymphoma as well as cancers affecting the prostate, skin, lung, liver and brain cancer in the exposed animals. IARC, the International Agency for Research on Cancer, which is part of the World Health Organisation, have been critical of the National Toxicology Programme and have downplayed their findings in relation to the effects of radio frequency radiation, microwave radiation on humans. The World Health Organisation rely on unscientific economic guidelines which do not take into account non-thermic exposures, neither 24-hour exposure. Also, ICNERF have a legal disclaimer on their website. However, despite IARC criticism, there have been additional human studies, including Serenat study, showing the increased risk of gliomas. Another Canadian study shows risk of glioma and this was not affected by selection or record bias. Incidence of glioblastoma of brain cancer in France and a temporal lobe doubled in England between 1995 and 2015. So what does the public need to know? They need to know that there will be multiple increases in cancer incidence associated with exposure to microwave radiation in animals and humans. Cancer risk is even greater to children due to the more vulnerable brains of children and the fact that the developing nervous system of children is more susceptible to tissue damaging agents. With 5G, this will greatly increase our exposures.
There are serious security and privacy issues to fully consider before allowing 5G in Somerset. Ann Queen, a cybersecurity expert, says the danger of people from other side of the world being able to control your driverless car and hacking into your personal data from all your connected devices is a real concern with 5G. He says much more strenuous testing of cyber vulnerabilities is needed and defenses should be built into these devices. And this is not happening because there's a rush to market by the manufacturers. He says ransomware problems, this is when you have to pay to get a virus removed from your device, will be on the increase with 5G. Can you imagine what it would be like to have to pay to restore and get your car, your driver's car back on the road and any other devices that you have? He says it's like a cat and mouse game and every new piece of software produced, there is a hacker in the wings with the ability to attack far outweighs our ability to defend. O2 reported that hackers have been able to raid bank accounts because the mobile app software, the banking, had a specific failure in it. So this is what we're going to be facing times 100 when it comes to 5G. He says that 5G networks could well become a hackers playground. And even if the software is initially secure, do we want to spend our time doing lots of updates on all our devices to maintain that security? We have our online searches and conversations reflected back to us in pop-up adverts, as it is. Can you imagine shopping in the family? Shopping centre, which has got a 5G test center there at the moment, where your every move and your every purchase is recorded? Just how will this information be used? Is this the future for our benefit? Is this what we want in Somerset? Do we exactly know how the data being collected by sensors on our lamp post, including face recognition and voice recognition? Do we know how this data is going to be used? And I'll be confident that there are regulations in place to keep our personal information safe. Our data is already being sold for the development of artificial intelligence. Where do you want what we're able to keep track of? And when we click yes to those terms and conditions, I really don't think that we know where that data is going. Google and Facebook are facing and also being complicit to genocide in China. And Brill and Page, their founders, have just recently resigned after this case was brought. Holland is taking their government of court, naming 76 laws which are broken by the 5G headlights. And this case can easily be replicated in this country because after all, the technology is the same.
I'm covering a few points regarding the health risks of 5G, especially for children. Please have your children, grandchildren and loved ones in mind. Thousands of scientists and doctors from 203 nations have signed the international appeal to stop 5G in space and on earth, which was recently handed in to Tendallon Street. Today, I'm handing you a list of names of scientists, professors and doctors who have all come to the scientific conclusion that microwave radiation causes DNA damage and therefore can be detrimental to our health. Microwave radiation far below the ICNERF guidelines can result in carcinogenicity, brain tumours, glioma, breast cancer, leukaemia, then genotoxicity, DNA damage, DNA repair efficient, mutagenicity and birth defects, neurodegenerative diseases such as Alzheimer's disease, neurobehavioural problems, autism, reproductive problems, miscarriages, oxidative stress, inflammation, blood-brain barrier disruption, disruption of menetone production, sleep disturbance, headache, irritability, fatigue, concentration difficulties, depression, dizziness, tinnitus, burning and flushed skin, digestive disturbance, tremor, cardiac irregularities, adverse impact on the neural, circulatory, immune and the cryoskeletal systems. Prior to making any decisions in regards to the rollout of 5G, could you please find the answer based on scientific peer-reviewed evidence to the following question? What is the safe level of microwave radiation for the ovarian follicles during the first 100 days development of the embryo? There are more than 10,000 peer-reviewed studies on the negative health effects of microwave radiation. There are 18 papers that Professor Martin Powell, all peer-reviewed and published specifically on the damaging effects of microwave radiation on fertility. On the 100th day, the female fetus has already developed all immature eggs in its ovaries. Which means that the future grandchildren of the pregnant woman are already being impacted at this very early stage. Can we be certain that the microwave radiation that 5G would bring is not going to cause harm to the DNA of these immature eggs? So what is the safe level of microwave radiation during these first 100 days of development of the embryo? The future of humanity, the healthy or unhealthy DNA of future generations and certainly the future of our children and grandchildren may depend on the answer to this important question. Dear councillors, I'm asking you to work together with us, with your local community so that we can together protect our children from overweight exposure to microwave radiation.
Chair, councillor, so I'll be giving you a brief outline supporting questions that have been scrutinely about PHE and more importantly, they're in trying to rebody the International Commission of Non-Ionising Radiation Protection, which I will try and refer now as ICNERF. Now, so ICNERF is an NGO based in Germany with 14 members. ICNERF is not a medical body. Most of its members have electronics backgrounds. For example, current UK representative, Dr Simon Mann, has degrees in electronics, not medicine. ICNERF does not carry out any independent research into safety itself and yet councillors. ICNERF sets the safety limits, which PHE, Ofcom and the WHO and the industry adhere to. And these limits are set dangerously high, hundreds of thousands of times higher than other countries and organisations. Why is this? Incredibly, ICNERF are basing their guidelines on 20-year-old search that exposed a full-grown man, he was a marine, for only 20 years.
that exposed a full grown man, he was a marine, for only six minutes. There was no heating effect, and this is thermal. Therefore, it is safe. It doesn't equate with the world we now live in or the increased exposure we are and will be subject to, especially as we've seen children. IKNR ignores the vast amount of scientific findings that clearly and convincingly show harmful effects and intensity is well below their safety limits guidelines. Crucially, why do they ignore the thousands of non-thermal studies that show cellular physiological and biological damage? Why is the science being ignored? Is it because IKNR is a revolving door with a telecommunications industry, a captive agency, as we say in diplomatic terms? Its opinions are not objective, not representative of the body of scientific evidence. They cherry pick studies that have a bias and favour of the telecoms industry. But don't take my word for it. As recently as January 2020, an Italian appeal court in Turin refused to accept evidence of IKNR plus conflicts of interest. The court did not consider IKNR to be a reliable witness. It's like the fox looking off the hen house. No testing, no regulations, no safety standards and no risk assessment has been done on 5G. What else goes to the public without this? This man-made, being-forming, pulsed and modulated microwaves are and will be causing biological damage to us, wildlife and importantly, our pollinators. The science is without question. And we are being exposed to this 24/7 with no let up, no escape and no way out. And the NGO that gives us our safety limits is incredible. To conclude, councillors, please help us. Please help the people of Somerset. We can't protect us and future generations by ourselves. We need your help.
The next speaker is Lucy White. Imagine a silent world, a world with no birds, no bees, trees gone or dying. This is the world we are moving into. And while ecologists have discounted climate change, the fact of not being considered is exposure to wireless radiation from mobile phone masks etc. And here in the countryside, we are incredibly vulnerable with the intensification of 4G. It really is the death knell for birds and bees. And we want to ask Somerset County Council if they are aware of three key ways that radiation affects wildlife, namely the DNA damage that we've been hearing about because no living organism can cope with the pulsing and that includes birds and bees. The interference with the earth's magnetic field, which interacts their abilities to navigate because all creatures have magnetite in their bodies, and the loss of habitat because you will be forced to remove trees to make way for better signals. And that is an appalling event that's going to happen. In terms of DNA damage, it affects fertility, so means birds and bees don't reproduce as easily. And we are seeing events like Colony B collapse disorder increase and these sort of things. The one that I really want to bring to your attention is the experiment of a Spanish biologist who placed two groups of frog eggs 140 metres away from masts. So this is a real life experiment. He observed these two groups for two months. One was protected in a variety cage and one was left exposed. The protected group all went out normally and they had about 4.2% mortality. In the exposed group, there was weird growth. Some were too big, some were too small, and there was a mortality rate of 90%. At 140 metres, that is further away than the people in Wales who are contesting the masts in the school playing field who live at 40 metres away from it. So this is what we really want to bring to your attention. And we want to know what Somerset County Council is doing to preserve biodiversity as is required to do. And also want to bring to your attention that if the cider harvest fails due to a lack of pollinators, there will be a riot in Somerset. And we really don't want to watch you super fast downloads of nature films to work out what we've been missing. Thank you.
My name is Sir Kevin Smith, I'm in science. I used to be an engineering manager at Procter and Gamble. And it was in that capacity that I conducted five risk assessments on ionizing radiation back in 2017. This was under the control of electromagnetic fields of World Cup. This is actually force of law, unlike IKNR guidelines. So I'd like to talk about the insurance industry. The insurance industry has a clear view of the standard of risk. They have top quality research units. We know how to conduct risk analysis and throw in the numbers. Back in the 1990s, lawyers in London had a near-death experience when claims for harm forced by asbestos began to come in. This flood of claims nearly destroyed lawyers. They have no intention of repeating this. This may be why lawyers introduced their exclusion clause 32 for their underwriters, which states, "The electromagnetic field exclusion is a general insurance exclusion and is applied across the market standard. The purpose of the exclusion is to exclude covered illness caused by continuous long-term non-ionising radiation exposure through mobile phone usage." Swiss Re has a similar view. Back in 2013, in their statement document, they stated, "If a direct link to health effects were established, it would open doors to new claims that ultimately lead to large losses." Swiss Re classified the potential risks as high over a timeframe of 10 years plus from 2013. Insurance companies are a kind of early warning radar. If claims are strict or refused, non-ionising radiation insurance, the buyout will happen and there's very good reason. They quite correctly factor in changes in the regulatory environment that is lowering of the currently wide open exposure barriers that will impact revenues. Also, anticipatory to the upcoming claims made on the insurance industry after 2020. The insurance industry has performed their due diligence in conducting risk analysis based on their aggregated peer-reviewed science. And quite clearly see a very, very high financial risk to their finances. Their original risk analysis in 2010 was very concerned that non-ionising radiation would become the new asbestos.
Thirty seconds.
They see the potential for financial loss. The asbestos claims will be affected as a form of occasional. The potential claims against the wireless industry are increasingly and increasingly end users could be from the general population at large. The worst risk you can take is the one you do not see or acknowledge. Take it, this is perhaps the clearest signal yet. This is the truth of the signal about hazards, non-ionising radiation. Given the scale of the infrastructure being run out of 5G, insurance companies stand to make very large profits. As of 2014, 60% of underwriters refused cover. And yet, although they can insure, most would not insure against anything that has to harm them. After 2015, under exclusion clause 32, in fact, it was near impossible to get cover for the harmful effects of non-ionising radiation. The insurance industry, the voting with their feet, can simply walk away from 5G and non-ionising radiation generally.
Okay, Madam Chair, I don't know how you want to do this, but Mr Casey submitted a number of questions. I don't want to read them all out, if that's okay. But what I'm suggesting is that I group them. So you submitted six questions which are particularly relating to 5G's methodology and epidemiological approaches to their recommendations. I believe those questions need to be addressed to 5G because I can't speak for them. But what I would say is that they use robust epidemiological methods to assess safety data and the government uses their recommendations to set standards. So I would suggest they are forwarded to 5G. However, I would like to pick up a couple of the issues you raised, specifically on question four. Mr Casey, can I be familiar with the question?
Yes.
Okay, so the question was, why has 5G taken so few steps to protect children and pregnant women when the dangers of radiofrequency electromagnetic radiation were pointed out to the government 20 years ago in the 2000 Stewart report? So William Stewart reported that children may be more vulnerable because of their developing nervous systems and the greater absorption of energy in the tissues of the head. I welcome this recognition. 5G has indeed issued precautionary advice to discourage the non-essential use of mobile phones amongst children because of the increased risk of putting the phone next to the head and the marrow developing stuff. So any support you can give and raising awareness of this precautionary advice would be most welcome. In terms of question five, the question you raised was, is it just a coincidence then that UK cancer is now the most common cause of death in children aged one to 14 years, accounting for around one-fifth of deaths in this age group? Interestingly, I'm also the child health lead for Somerset, so I have some interest in this area and share your concerns. However, what I would say is that the last published reports around childhood mortality in Somerset and internationally shows that still injuries and external causes are the leading cause of death for children aged one to 18 years. The fact that the percentage of deaths increasing caused by cancer is because actually we've got much better at children living through congenital difficulties or transomal conditions in adulthood. So the proportion is increasing, but the numbers have stayed the same. And I would highlight that the EU Scientific Committee of Emerging and Nearly Identified Health Risks, SKIIR, concluded that the incidence of tumours amongst all ages have not increased since the introduction of cell phones. I believe, oh, you had a question seven around the excellent work that Professor Michael Marm has recently done. I would commend the report to individuals. This is around health inequalities. But again, that clearly needs to be addressed to Professor Marm. And question eight, I will address in my presentation. We'll provide those answers to you later. Thank you. Thank you very much indeed, Alison. Thank you all of you for attending and also for all the speakers and all the information you've given to my subscription committee. All the questions that have been submitted will receive a written answer. I'm told now they will provide answers to others who ask questions.
I've noticed many of you are reading off sheets of paper when reading the questions, so obviously many of those we haven't seen slides on. So if you could leave that copy with us, that would be a huge help A for us as an administrative meeting, but also provide your response to you as well. So I applaud your background, Rebecca, using our responsibility to ask. If you could leave copies of your questions or statements, that would be a huge help.
Thank you very much indeed. We move to item five on the agenda, which is 5G technology update. I welcome Paul Coles from BT, Hymish Park from Mobile UK. Alison, thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Thank you for the opportunity to come to my place of birth and talk. The cyber comment was interesting because my father's first job in leaving schools was as a cybertaster in Norfolk, Florence. So that did bring back some family memories for me. I'm going to talk about 4G and 5G and then I think I'm handing over to my colleague, Hamish Hadd from Mobile UK. The first thing I wanted to do, hopefully the slides will move, is just give you an idea of the coverage as it currently stands for 4G in Somerset. And it's around about 93% of the landmass covered, which will be probably 98, 99% of the population of Somerset covered, with some more network rollout to come and some life-changing examples of coverage on Xmore that have really changed some of the communities and how they live and survive there. So there's been some really interesting stuff happening on Xmore. I should say that our 4G network is entirely powered by renewable energy, as our 5G network will be. The cyber question is a good one and it's something dear to our hearts. So we employ over 3,000 cyber specialists to keep our network secure, not just in the UK but globally. Unfortunately, with an awful lot of cyber breaches, they do tend to be down to human error. Need for getting to update my password or having 123456 as a password. But we do engage with robust cyber defences. In fact, each month, we deflect about 135 million attempts at to networks that have got malware viruses on them. So there's a robust way which we deal with cyber. One thing I did want to point out is over the last six months on EE Network alone, and BT owns EE, Hamish can talk for the rest of the industry, there have been 7 billion calls made. These are children phoning their parents to say, I'm okay, but I've missed the bus. Can I have a lift? These are people phoning up 111 saying, I'm concerned about coronavirus. Could you give the advice? These are businesses going about earning a living and paying taxes in Somerset for whom the lack of 4G would be a disaster frankly. So there are many, many people who run their lives and their businesses off the back of having a mobile network that they can use. So what will 5G deliver? I guess some of the marketing headlines will talk about higher speeds and higher download and upload speeds. And we'll talk about some of that a little bit later on in the presentation. But one of the key things or key characteristics of 5G is its low latency ability, its ability to send a signal and be able to respond back into the core networks very quickly around what's being detected or what's being shared from a, or sent from a data perspective. And interestingly, whilst I myself am a little bit of a skeptic around autonomous vehicles, we are seeing quite a few ecologists, environmentalists and the agriculture sector looking at 5G as a way in which they can help monitor the environment and the species on the planet to improve their welfare and their being. And I noticed the BBC showed an example of wireless technologies being used on bees to understand how they twiddle. So how will the impact be felt when 5G arrives? I think what we'll start to see is some interesting new applications developed. There's some very interesting research coming out to the West Country universities on this. I myself am involved personally in some very interesting research and practical applications of 5G and other radio technologies in an agricultural environment with some leading agriculture institutes, which I think is really exciting for us as a rural economy. And ultimately, I think there'll be some interesting new applications around augmented and virtual reality. And I've had a number of councils come to me to say, that's really important for us where we've got tourism and we want to enrich the experience that people have when they're visiting an area. So I think 5G and AR, VR has got some interesting opportunities there. So just to give you a couple of examples of how 5G has been practically used by us. This is the dockyard at Belfast and you'll see some people wearing VR masks. And ultimately, what they can do there using 5G is to be able to go out and do maintenance on the cranes and to be able to have a heads-up display that can show what type of maintenance regime they should be working to, or watch a playback videos where people have previously maintained the equipment and they want to see how it was done. So huge time-saving there in terms of people using 5G to go out and maintain the dockyard equipment. The next one is one that we did in West Midlands and healthcare. And this shows a remote clinician working with a paramedic in an ambulance. The paramedic is using a haptic glove which enables them to be able to give a real sense of feeling of that patient's body and the ultrasound that's going on back to the remote clinician so that the remote clinician can then guide the paramedic as to where he wants to see the ultrasound so that they can make some decision around that patient's care without having to sort of flash through the lanes and the roads and the streets of the city to get them to primary care. In other words, they could potentially deliver the care there and then over a 5G network. And that's got some, you know, huge applications for the healthcare marketplace and the NHS are very excited about the use of that technology. That's it from me. I think I am handing over to Hamish.
I'm Hamish Hadd, the director of Mobile UK, which is the trade body for the new mobile network operators. And I've just been asked to, I've been asked to talk about the safety framework surrounding the use of our signals. Quite a lot of the ground has been covered already by the amount of speakers, so I'll try not to repeat too much of that. But let's just start with some of the basics. Ah, there we go. So we have 92 million connections currently in the UK, 95% of us have a mobile phone. There are four mobile network operators, EE, which is owned by BT Group, 302 and Vodafone, and a number of what they call virtual operators who are pretty back on the networks of those other four, such as Tesco, Virgin, Sky. And this vigorous competition, that's what drives innovation and investments in new network technology. About 20 million 999 calls are made for mobile phones each year, so it's also an extremely important part of our overall safety framework. And innovation and many new applications are coming down the track to the utility in our everyday life. So I've got a slide here on 5G, which calls really covered quite a lot of that. Perhaps I should just talk about 4G, because in the rural areas in the UK, we get a lot of pressure from people to improve the mobile phone coverage in the rural areas because they rely on it so much to run their everyday lives and their businesses. GSNA, our global trade body, published a report last week, which said in Europe, about three, just over 3% of GDP is accounted for by the mobile industry and all the jobs and tax revenue that that generates. This week, the operators and the government announced another billion pounds is going to go into improving rural coverage in the rural areas. At the moment, Somerset has got about 80% geographic coverage from all four operators. We're looking to improve that in the coming years. So let's just talk about this EMF topic, which is clearly of great interest to this particular audience. So I have, there are two key questions. What are the safety guidelines that we are working to? And how can we be confident that the operators are working within those guidelines? And I think it's also important to point out that those questions apply to our 2G network, which was launched in around 1990 for primary for voice calls, the 3G network, which was launched around about just the beginning of the noughties. Terrestrial TV, terrestrial radio, wifi are all subject to these same guidelines. And this next slide, this extremely, not as understanding audience, will be rather certain to requirements, but we are operating in the, this is the total spectrum, the total range of the electromagnetic spectrum, so radio waves that where we are in the, on the left-hand side of the slide, the non-ionising section, through visible light and up into the ionising gamma rays, X-rays, this will be to the non-ionising, I know it's a matter of contention to this audience, the low-energy, non-destructive or RTMA section of the EMF And as has been mentioned a number of times before this morning, the guidelines are set by ICNAP, the International Commission on Non-Ionising Radiation Protection, which is an independent body, multi-disciplinary and formally recognised by the World Health Organisation. Yeah, I would appreciate that personally, and I'm sure my accountants would be certain too. If you were, if you were just on my side, I'd be looking at their talk on this side. Thank you. Sorry, I've skipped ahead on that sensitive button here. So here are the guidelines. The, as a number of people have pointed out this morning, they have been, they first published in 1998, we affirmed in 2017 in the UK, we adopted them as the appropriate guideline after the Stuart report that they referred to, which was published in 2000. And based on a very comprehensive assessment of all the applicable research on health effects, they set precaution guidelines that basically design, sorry, guide how we design our mobile network infrastructure. The draft guidelines published for consultation back in 2018 to take into account the most recent research, and I believe today they are actually publishing the final version of the next version. Sorry, apologies if I haven't had the opportunity to read them, but I think they are, they may be published as we sit here. So let's just talk about the compliance with the guidelines. Okay. So the guidelines are set, they talk about, they are, they're different, they are different depending on the frequency that we are using in small ways. And the exposure levels for the publicly accessible areas are set below the ICNAP guideline levels. Essentially, that helps them, they work out what is a safe exposure limit. They then, because of all the benefits of the doubts, build in some precaution principles, they divide that by five for people that are working with EMF. So that's all subject to the health and safety executive and EMF regulations. And then they divide again by 10 to work out what they call the public exposure limits. So the precaution is built into the guidelines. They work, sorry, they apply for up to 300 gigahertz. We are using frequencies from around 700 gigahertz, which is the same as digital television, up to, mostly up to about 3.8 gigahertz, just below the 5 gigahertz, which wifi uses. On our roadmap, we have these 26 gigahertz, what they call millimetre wave, so still well within the 300 gigahertz that the guidelines are applicable to. Just, the 26 gigahertz is in use in the UK for fixing things currently, so again, it's not new frequencies that we're talking about here for 5G. How much we will see the millimetre wave deployed in rural areas, I suspect not a lot. The estimates is that in the fall, it's around about 3%, of the UK will have these, using these millimetre wave technologies. But nonetheless, all these frequencies will have to be compliant with the ICNAP guidelines. So just looking at, come on, sorry. So our independent regulator, Ofcom, was mentioned earlier, and they carry a compliance testing. If you're a school or a hospital, you can request and they will do this free of charge, and they do test you all on a regular basis also. So I would refer the committee to some publications, I think it's the 21st of February, they have been around the country testing locations where 5G is currently being used, pretty much all of which is in the tends urban areas. And I think it's about 20, 20 cities they've visited and they've done five tests around those cities. That's all online, all available for people to see. They found that in all cases, the exposures that the public was experiencing was less than 1%, in some cases quite considerably less than 1% of the ICNAP exposure limits. And just finally, I'm going to show you some pictures of, these are clips taken from a recent BBC, probably not very, I'm trying to scroll into it because you probably won't be able to see the back there. So I expect it's still on BBC iPlayer, so this is a BBC clip, went out and did some testing of that, oh, using an EMF monitor. And hopefully you can see in the left-hand picture here, they have stuck the monitor three or four inches from the antenna, and the reader, the reading is 551% of the safe guidelines. If you've got a monitor, you have literally a few inches from the antenna, you would be exceeding the guidelines. But in the next slide, you will see that they have withdrawn the monitor by a metre or two, and already at that point, they are experiencing 6% of the safety guidelines, so well within already at that short distance. And then standing just below the antenna, like that, they're getting 1.6% of the reference levels. So I hope that shows you that actually the power drops off extremely quickly. And the Ofcom evidence, the closure, evidence that they've published in the last week demonstrates that it's well below 1% of the safety, of the safety reference levels. So that's really all I had to say. Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you very much.
So I'm sorry, there was one more slide on further information. So we've got the European Union Scientific Committee on Emerging and Newly Identified Health Risks, SKIIR, part of Health England, and the extent that we want to go to see Mobile UK's website on this topic, we also have information about that. Thank you.
Okay, good morning, everyone. My name's Alison Bell, someone in public health and I'm based here at County Kilmarnock as part of Public Health England. So I've been asked to inform the committee this morning as the National Public Health Guidance regarding 5G. We have covered some of this already, but I will go through it this slide. So Public Health England, as it's been mentioned, has a specialist centre called the CRCU, and it takes the lead on public health matters associated with radio frequency electromagnetic fields or radio waves used in telecommunications. Amongst a whole other hazard, a whole other range of work that they do, they advise us around radiation as well, they advise us around chemicals. There are specialist teams that we look to for advice on a whole range of issues that affect our population. So when we have a chemical incident, we phone them. When we have anything to do with inclu, we phone them. So we work very closely with them. Public Health England publishes comprehensive reviews on the scientific evidence related to this topic, and they do that on an ongoing basis. Because they're a specialist centre, they're in touch with the evidence as it emerges, and they constantly review what's coming out. So I think just to address the myths that were being talked about this morning, it's important to understand that they are monitoring this on a mobile basis, that science is moving on, they are monitoring it. In terms of their position on 5G technology, exposure to radio waves is not new, and health research has been conducted on this topic for decades. The biological mechanisms that govern that interaction between radio waves and our tissues in our body is well understood, and that is the basis for the international guidelines. So the International Commission on the Matters in Radiation Protection concluded that scientific literature published since the 1998 guidelines has provided no evidence of adverse health effects below the basic restrictions, and that did not necessitate any immediate revision of its guidance on limiting exposure to radio frequency fields. It's worth noting that those guidelines apply to 300 gigahertz, well beyond the maximum few tens of gigahertz frequencies under discussion for 5G. The most recent PAT review was undertaken by their advisory group on mobile radiation, that was in 2012, and that considered whether there was new evidence for health effects related to these exposures. And their conclusion again was that there was no convincing evidence that radio wave exposures below guideline levels cause health effects in either adults or children. The report and all of these reports are in the public domain, and I really would encourage people to read them. My colleague highlighted the, I never know how to say it, the SKIIR work, which I'm just trying to find, but that is really, that's an EU Scientific Committee that said in the time that we've had mobile phones in the UK, we haven't seen a corresponding increase with cancers. So that is all I have to say. My job here is just to reiterate the national advice, but I would say that I stand by the public health science about epidemiology. This is a special branch of medicine, and it looks at population level effects, not individual cases, and that is a different branch of medicine to diagnosing symptoms in an individual patient. Thank you very much, Jeanne Anderson. I allow the commission to speak, I'm afraid you would not know, but these five people who are signed to this, are seriously responsible for building, and I'd like them to, if they have any questions.
Things about 5G include brain tumours in children are increasing, so my question to you is, is that the case? To Paul Coles, also here, and told that satellites are all around the earth or will be beaming down waves that are going to cause damage to all of us, is the satellite situation, is, sorry, is 5G or will 5G in this country re-operate using satellites? And just a brief one to Hamish from the car, I couldn't, I don't quite understand, Hamish, what a roadmap is, if you could explain that over to Richard. Thank you.
Okay, can we do one more time? So your question was about brain cancers. I'll just reiterate, the SKIIR guidance that says during the use of mobile phones, we haven't seen a corresponding increase in cancers amongst adult and children. What we have seen is amongst children, the proportion of deaths attributed to cancer has increased, the proportion has increased because other causes of childhood mortality have gone down.
On the satellite question, we certainly not plan to be putting up satellites to do 5G. I also suspect that I would defer to our research and development team, BT Spender third, I have some out on R and D in the UK. I suspect I'd say that the satellites are too far away to deliver a 5G service. Now, I think where satellites get conflated is you could see a scenario where, let's say Africa, you might choose to use satellite to deliver a mobile communication service at some time in order that those sort of technologies can be brought to those areas, but certainly we've got no plans to use satellite for 4G, 5G.
So on the roadmap question, so at the moment, the operators are deploying 5G using the 3 gigahertz type spectrum. The reason these highest spectrum allocations are being planned is to potentially provide capacity, more capacity at the plant for data processing. So it's currently the way stuff is being used to fix things, it's not being deployed as part of the mobile operators 5G networks at the moment, but in the future it's available for capacity, if that's what is necessary. for capacity, if that's what is necessary.
Can I just come up? Just a brief one, overall, my original question on satellites, do you have any information about the other operators in terms of will they use satellites in the UK? I do not aware of that.
Counselor Bellman?
Thank you, Chair. A couple of general questions, if Mary could want to speak, if they could. We've heard a lot of discussion about IGNIP and their role. I just want to be completely explain the concern being raised that they're more technical people rather than medical people, and that how does that actually work in terms of advising Public Health England? So if I could, if you could just clarify what their role is and that. Also, again, we've heard that we can be secure that this is all right, because we've got a lot of experience of this over the years in terms of 2G, 3G, 4G. But again, the public comments are that in fact those have a course of problems, and therefore this is just an escalation of that. So can you explain again why there is that dissonance between the view of the industry and the view of the public in terms of the existing differences of impact, particularly in relation to, I think, the issues raised that currently we look at the impact on heating rather than the biological impacts of these waves. So again, if you could just again, for us as laypeople, in words of sort of one syllable, try and explain to us what that position is. And the final one's just the technical, to IT people in effect. We had one of them, I think, said the coverage in Somerset at the moment is ninety-odd percent. I think the industry said it was about eighty-odd percent. I just wondered why there's that difference between what BT and E are saying, what the industry is saying.
Just, so Paul gave the EE coverage number, I gave the coverage for the areas of Somerset which are covered by all four operators, so that clarifies. On the IGNIP side of things, so they are a multidisciplinary team, they have scientists from a broad range of disciplines, because you need the technologists to assess the measurements side of things, you need the biologists to look at the research. And I think the number that they've quoted is they've, over the years, they've looked at twenty-five thousand pieces of research. But I think they're, and to address your address to point about the issues that are already coming up, the consistent message from Public Health England from the European body is that no adverse health effects have been established below the reference levels.
And I think just to add to that last comment, I think we're not saying that people aren't experiencing adverse symptoms. So people talk about electricity and stimping, and they describe real symptoms, we're not saying they're not having those symptoms. What we're discussing is the cause for those symptoms. So I think that's why you see a difference in the PHE advice, and the fact that there's no adverse health effects with people's very real experiences and poor health experience. The difference in those views is the cause of those.
Just one further clarification, in terms of, in terms of the issue raised about the reliance on old tests in terms of the marine, as opposed to the general public in terms of the eating effects as a wrong biological, whether that can be updated or not.
I'm going to be completely honest, that is a question that PHE wouldn't need to answer about the methods they've been using to assess those risks. That's why we demand the specialist doctors.
Counselor Nation?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you to everyone just taking the time to come here today. I was no good at science at school, and I'm still no good, but I do care about the health and wellbeing of my fellow human beings, particularly in Somerset. I just wanted to check if I may, Chair, that Tessa Mont, who's unable to be here today, that her seventeen questions have actually reached this committee, and that she will get a written reply to those questions, if I understand.
Yes, Chair.
Thank you very much, Chair. I was wanting to ask Alison, if I may first, when PHE was created, I know nothing of its history, I'm just wondering if that organisation was around giving government advice on use of asbestos, promotion of diesel cars, and on smoking, or whether PHE is actually a more newer organisation, in which case, who was advising the government in those days? And then a general question I wanted to ask, is Somerset working with Devon in any way? Devon County Council are now doing a lot of work through their scrutiny committees, and that it might be sensible for us to work with Devon if they are already committing resources to 5G and further exploration, perhaps that's something that we could consider working in conjunction with them? And the figure that I've seen earlier today, that ninety-five percent of people with mobile phones, I wonder, does that figure include children, or is that an adult, a new figure? Thank you. I can answer your different question. I attended Devon for the first consultation with the public. They have not moved any further forward with that, and that's the description of your report later. I know of no extra resources that they're putting into this at the moment.
Alison was going to try and answer your question.
Okay, so Public Health England, don't quote me, but I think it was created in 2014. You might remember the NHS was reorganised, and that's when public health came over to local authority. And Public Health England was created from the former Health Protection Agency. And Health Protection Agency was involved in advising government on a range of health protection issues, but PHE has a much broader remit than the Health Protection Agency had, so it brought in the radiological advisory bodies, the food standard advisory bodies, and a whole range of public health functions into one organisation. So I think that answers that question.
Sorry, just the number of mobile phones, whether that ninety-five percent includes children or whether that's adults?
That includes children, yes.
Counselor, now?
Chair, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming and bringing this debate to us today. I'm not very good on IT, and I don't understand everything we're talking about, but one thing that really, really concerns me is the destruction of pollinators, the insects, the birds, the field mice, or those are things which, with biodiversity in mind, is our major food supply we all live on. And we might be talking about when we're cancer, we're having bad health problems, but if we've got no food, we'll have bigger health problems. And I don't think anybody's answered those questions, it took a human being to have talked about our biodiversity, and feed ourselves.
Well, anyway, one thing we've talked about, that is the bee colony collapse disorder, which is a phenomenon that predates mobile phone network, so it would be a stretch to attribute to them. But again, I would say there is no evidence, convincing evidence, that the EMF is causing destruction to our wireless.
Counselor Locke?
Counselor Locke, thank you, Chair. I find that quite an extraordinary statement to make, frankly. And I'm sorry, I'm sudden today, and I wasn't up for the previous briefing, so I'm coming to this sort of evening today. My concern, first of all, was that the first part of this presentation is all around the commercial aspect of this, and I don't think that that's really what we're here for today. I understand that there's great reliance on Huawei, British Telecom, and the fear that they might withdraw to 4G if they don't get this 5G in the order that they want it to. I do have some questions, and I understand that Public Health England, and I look at the first line of the first bullet from there, that research was undertaken in 2012, which eight years ago, the way technology's moved forward so quickly, is actually a long time ago. And the Public Health England has stated that it's not in their remit to review their research. And so I don't think that we can rely on people who tend to cherry pick research and use it to further their arguments. And I'd like to ask the gentleman over there, what other research have they looked at? How recent is it? And what are they doing to make sure this is safe? I think the geography of this country, we're a small country, and if you're looking at the United States, if you're looking at Australia, who are already wary about 5G, the geography is far different with masks and proximity. What are they doing to make sure that our communities are kept safe and not relying on outdated research? I think early on in the discussions, there was a suggestion of a task and finish group from one of the speakers, and I would suggest that would be a new idea around scrutiny on this council, that perhaps the relative small group of us, it would be very useful to think about a task and finish group that may be able to take this forward, and may be able to look at this matter in depth, and to advise council as a whole on this incredibly important matter for Somerset and for the rest of the country. Thank you.
Okay, Chair, you've asked me to respond on this point, and for those who don't remember, I'm the Director for Economic and Community Structure at the County Council. And a little bit of background as to why we had the range of speakers, we did scrutiny, committee members asked for this item to be brought forward, and the suggestion was that we should try and make sure that you hear a variety of viewpoints, and that you informed about the reviews. So we tried to make sure you heard from the industry, you've heard from public health experts, and it'd be very helpful, we've had a range of people come in and give in their views. So hopefully it's allowed around the number of viewpoints. I think what I want to react to is what is the county council's role in this, it should be useful to hear it. But I think we have to be really clear, we're not the authority that sets the standards, that's done by others who have been spoken to today. We are not the planning authority for these maps, that sits with our district council colleagues in a two-tier system. So when people come forward and require a planning permission for something, that would be considered by them, not by this authority. So I just think, if you wish to do any further work in this, you need to be very clear about what is the county council's role, because I wouldn't want to raise people's expectations that we are the authority who have powers to change things, that's essentially what does at national level, or we have district council colleagues who are involved in the planning process.
Thank you very much. Chair, I understand what you want to say, absolutely, but I do think to have a balanced view, we heard a lot of speakers who were not allowed to take part in the debate, and we heard from two groups of people who have not got quite the same reservations about 5G as perhaps other people do. So I'm not sure that I accept that it was totally a balanced view, because as I say, the other group here weren't allowed to take part. I think that, I accept that we have limitations on what we can look at and what we can take forward, but we are the sort of first tier of representation in this county, and if we can't have a view on it, then I think that's really rather sad, and rather diminishes any influence that we have, not only in public's eyes, but in the, you know, in the future of Somerset as well. So I would ask, if you consider a task and finish group, I understand and I accept that it might have quite strict limitations, absolutely I do, but I do think it's something that this council should have a view on and be able to advance. We have views on lots of things, and I think this is probably one that is important for our admiration. Thank you.
Counselor Nation?
Thinking of the future of local government in Somerset, perhaps a focus for a task and finish group would be to look at where local authorities have powers and influence in anything that has to do with 5G. Because if the future of local government in Somerset changes, and sometime in the future, it's not a two-tiered local government system in Somerset, then it won't be possible for this council to say, that's over to the districts, and it won't be possible for the districts to say, are the street lamps are Somerset? So if there's any charge that's the future of local government in Somerset changing, we should be thinking about it now, not in two years' time. Thank you, Chair.
Very speeches as well, very grateful to stand up here and speak. Charlie Kay, perhaps you should take up, I've been speaking. Mr Vosel, I just wanted to say to you, sir, if I may, I've never ever, I've seen thousands, as we all have, people speaking microphones, I've never seen someone decline it, which is your right to do, and very understandable with the condition you have. But I was surprised to see that the rest of you did choose to use the speakers based on that threat, which was strange, and I'm not going to be big here at all, but I imagine most of you also have mobile phones, which I would have thought you would not do. Moving on from that, no site, of course, was a bad issue too, that was a bit worrying. In terms of my own division, which is the west of Taunton, no contact whatsoever from residents on this subject, which is strange. Never heard about it on the news, or very little of it on the news either. I started a good department yesterday, don't worry, I'm on your side, do me a hand. Listening to the parliamentary mark yesterday, the question-
Is there a question, or is this a statement?
As a member of the committee, Chair, that's all.
Oh, it's not a question, because I've got a member who-
Sorry, I thought you asked a question.
And I've got a member, other elected members here as well.
I thought you, I'm trying to-
You're making lots of statements, it's not scrutinising anything.
I am indeed, you're quite right. Okay, so I'll give you my reasons for where I've arrived, why I think we should have a task and finish group. I've spent many hours with people from this side and this side of this-
As have you all.
As have you all indeed, we have. And it's very difficult, I think all of us councillors are in a very bad, a very difficult situation. If ten or twenty percent of what they say, which I've said before in the meeting, is correct, then this is a problem for us all. And I do agree with Counselor Nation's point of actually having a check on this, we need to, I think, have a task and finish group. The situation we are in is, do we believe our experts, or do we believe what's coming from the other side, the people who are concerned about the aspects of 5G? I think working with Devon County Council could be useful, although I appreciate them actually not moving very far forward with that. The only thing I would like to say, which is interesting for me, is that we're all here today with the risk of the COVID-19 virus, and we are happy to take experts' decisions on that, and we are here at their advice, as it were. If they said do not have large hair things gatherings, we wouldn't be here. If they said do not have large gatherings, we wouldn't be here, but we're not happy to take the advice on 5G. So it's a very difficult thing for a councillor, I think, to make any sort of call on this, and because of that, I do think we should have a task and finish group. I think we need to look at this further and see where it takes us, because as the county council, which could eventually be, of course, a unitary council, I think the right thing to do is to make, or at least give a call on this and show to the residents that we are taking this seriously and that we are concerned about their welfare and their health. Thank you.
Counselor Lo, you wish to come back?
Thank you, Chair, I did ask a question, there was a notice then on the task and finish group and the possibility of that. I did ask a question about what the industry were doing on ensuring the safety rather than cherry picking outdated research, which is what's happening currently, and whether they were involved themselves on making sure that people are safe.
Alison will try to answer your question.
Yeah, Chair, I have forgotten your question. So on the screen, you've got the Agnew last report, since that time, there's been a range of other international publications, the Skinnings in 2015, there are publications in 2017. What expert advisory groups do is they do systematic reviews of all the evidence that's being published and come up with new recommendations. My point to that one is that is our last national recommendation, that doesn't mean to say they're not constantly hearing new evidence as it's coming out. So there's a brief that was circulated to all committee members, I believe it's in public domain, Public Health England's census of the data and the research publications, so maybe that came out with papers. I think because you're not known with the committee, you probably didn't receive it, and you can see that actually this is an issue that is constantly being reviewed, based on sort of the last thirty years of evidence that we have and going forward.
Thank you very much, Chief. Are there any other elected members who have any questions? Oh, sorry, I couldn't see them.
No, I'm out of the way. Good morning, good morning, Chair. I've listened to both sides of this today, and I can understand, I have a thing that you mentioned wrong with me already, so I can't actually say I've contacted from these devices that you were saying about, but if we have a task and finish group, I wonder how we could take this forward unless it actually, all right, not necessarily even the county council, rightly local MPs, because they are the ones that have got their ears to the government, and they're the ones that would actually be the person that would actually change or look at it further, and we could have a more up-to-date research taken about this, because I think it is important, it is important to all our health, to children and everyone, and I think it's going to be quite a large challenge to a lot of young people to give up their mobile phones because they've already had them, they use them. But I would like to see that, you know, the task and finish, if you have one, you would have to really all work together and contact your local MPs so that they can contact the government, because it's the government's legislation that Alison has been reporting today, and I think that we have to go that way as well. I think we need to make them aware. Thank you, Chair.
Anyone else have any questions, send us a chance. Counselor Thor?
Counselor Thor, sorry, sorry. Could I just come back on that one? The difficult, I think, some task and finish groups are government legislation, we don't think of a climate emergency for a task and finish group, so it's not impossible to do, and we did try and focus on those things as well, but because it's government legislation, it hasn't stopped us from going after it.
Can I remind the committee members that this item will be discussed when we have our forward plan, our work programme, so if that's established, you can decide it at that time. So to save any further discussion about task and finish, which is not in my hands, which is in your hands, we will do that at the end of the meeting. Counselor Thor?
Thank you. I was going to say that I think that in answer to all this, I'm about understanding who's responsible for the things, that we have responsibility for public health, and I think that's where a task and finish group might come in. And a gentleman over there speaking earlier, I could talk about whether we understand all aspects of 5G SA, I certainly don't, I've got some concerns about the middle meter wave communications, so whilst a lot of it may be, there may be bits that aren't. The whole debate today, I have to say, reminded me a little bit about, well, I was hospitalized a few years ago, gallstones, and consultants stood at the end of my bed and said he's going to take my gallbladder out, and I asked him what effect that would have on me, and he talked about how, I just have access to people have this done every day of the week, didn't talk about the impact on me, didn't give me the answer I was looking for. And similarly today, a lot of the concern is about health, impact on human health, and the answers we get are that there are ninety two million connections a year, a hundred million calls to 999, children using their phones to ring their parents to say they're safe and all that sort of thing, and not really specifically addressing the health implications. So I would support the task and finish group idea, if you want to stay on board, thank you.
Are there any other questions for members?
Well, I thank you profusely for all of you who've come, and the amount of time and expert advice that you've given us and information, I'm sure many of us feel better informed during many meetings, and we ask, it's like project fee almost, because I don't know how it's going to affect us in the future, and no one does. I hope that you all understand Somerset County Council's role and that you realise that we do not make the ultimate decision, hopefully we can influence it in some way. My committee will decide later, when we decide our work programme, if a task and finish, obviously our commitment is possible, but thank you profusely. We will now have a sort of five-minute comfort break before we go into our budget. Thank you so much.